Good morning, Commissioners. Just so you know, we're live and Commissioner Rogers let us know.
Honesty, you're muted.
Good morning. Commissioner Rogers let us know that he'll be in 10 minutes late and also we're live.
Well, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Neola. Appreciate your getting us started. Welcome, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 20th, and this is Chair Catherine Harrington. And with us today in our Board of Commissioners work session, we have Commissioner Nafisa Phi, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willie. And as our recorder for the meeting, Ms. Neola let us know Commissioner Rogers will be joining us in about 10 minutes. So, thank you to our team for getting our improved Zoom link access going. I know it was the first time I was asked to choose to be a panelist. So it's like, oh, cool. I know they're continuing to improve processes all along the way and make sure that our iAgenda use is user-friendly for everyone. The first item on the agenda is board and leadership communication. So who of the Commissioners, who would like to go first this wonderful Tuesday morning? Smiles, I love it. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
I vote Nafisa.
Oh, it's not a vote. You spoke first.
Oh, shoot. Okay.
Oh, my goodness. I will go. Yes, boss.
You don't have to. It's okay, you know, but if you want to.
Jerry says Jerry goes. So I'll go. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for volunteering for me. And I don't have a lot to share, except I had a really great town hall for the month of July. I think I shared with everyone that I'm committed to doing a monthly town hall. And we had the first one July, last Thursday, actually. And, you know, there was great registration, great attendees, and people were really excited to have a conversation and this opportunity to engage in a democratic way. And a lot of the conversation really focused on homeless encampment. There are people on both sides of the issue that are concerned about what's happening and what Washington County Board of Commissioners and in general, Washington County is doing around homeless encampment and some of the campgrounds that are existing. And, you know, one of the great conversations that came out that Julie and Sia and Tanya were able to put together was a frequently asked question document around, especially the area that's a hot topic right now, 197th and Baseline. And there's been a lot of incidents. There's, I've seen, there has been a lot of concerns, the safety for the people that live in that camp and the people that live around that camp, and then our Sheriff Department and our Public Health Sector. So we're going to be sharing that document with the constituents. And then one other thing that residents requested from us is that Washington County, the next town hall be focused on, the August town hall that I'm doing focused on homeless encampment and what is our game plan in terms of addressing this issue? I think, you know, we all are, I'm sure, in agreement that we can't say to people, go home when they have no home to go to. And we certainly can disperse them to say, go to migrate to another location and to another neighborhood. So I think it's worthwhile to have this August conversation be focused on homeless encampment and just so people, and just so we, the residents know what our intentions are in terms of solving this problem and how we're going to approach it. And I'm really excited and I made that commitment and promised to them that August will be focused on homeless encampment and it will be more led from the staff, Tanya, you know, Tanya, to really share some hard evidence and hard facts. And then, and hopefully by then, our board will have a conversation around this. And I can go back and say, this is what we're trying to do. And I'm hoping that this won't be just a district-wide conversation, but it will really be more of partnership with other Commissioners because homeless encampment.
Thank you for interrupting your flow. I'm a little confused. We've, if I heard you correctly, you just talked about the board having a first conversation. We've already been deep into this. We have a countywide strategy. So I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, and just as you are confused, people are confused, Chair Harrington. And I think what people have seen our plan and they're not happy about it. They really need a solution to say, here are all the camps that are happening in Washington County, and here's what we're planning to do. And I don't think people have heard, they've seen the homeless encampment management program, and people were not happy with that, our approach. People are coming, so I think.
So that's useful feedback, right? I hear that feedback. So it's one data point of feedback in terms of, do people know what our strategy and approach is? And it sounds like some people aren't as aware of that as they would desire, and other people aren't, have differing opinions about that strategy and approach. So I think that's another piece of feedback for us to talk about as a full board and decide on our full county approach.
All I said, yeah, absolutely agree with you, Chair. I think we need, we just have to have that conversation and then to get it out, the information to people. And so, yeah, it was a really good conversation. I really appreciate everyone that showed up and came with their prepared questions and really asked the hard questions of, you know, I elected you. What are you going to do about this problem? I'm concerned my safety is in danger. What are you going to do? I'm also concerned the people that are in there, and I hear what you're saying. So it was just a really good conversation, and I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation to, you know, at least to start, get on that path of what are we going to?
So later on, when we shift to leadership communication as well, I think it's worth us asking if, instead of taking a, or along with having a district-specific town hall, it may well be time for us to have a community-wide town hall on this subject earlier than our end-of-September town hall, where we, just like we did at the June 28th town hall, we had a focus on mental health. We have an overview presentation on what our approach is and why that is both appropriate to the community need and legal, and then entertain questions. So we'll leave that there and then come back to it with Ms. Angie later. Okay, sorry to interrupt your flow of report-out, Commissioner Phi.
Oh, no, I trust your approach, Chair Harrington.
Thank you for all of that good information. Really appreciate it. Okay, who's next? Welcome, Commissioner Rogers. We're just on board communication. Oh, don't be shy, folks. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
I was waiting until my ferocious guard dog decided to stop barking. So there's something going on. I don't know what, but anyway, I think that's taken care of. Now, it's a, it's a good week. And there's a couple of things that I'm going to come back around to. Again, we're going to talk about the Econo Lodge and the meeting that I went to last night. But before that, last week, we had the Public Safety Coordinating Committee and the Department of Community Corrections presented their plan and mission report. It was, had a lot of good information in it as well as looking forward. So I would encourage you, it's on the website, so I would encourage you to take a quick peek at it. It is a 67-page document, so it'll be more than a quick peek if you read it. But it's, there's a lot of really good information in there, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that. This Wednesday is the GPI.
Wait, 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 wait.
Monthly board meeting. Yep.
Ms. Angie? I really appreciate Commissioner Willie bringing that to the fore. Are we having one-on-ones with staff on that? Or is that slated for a future work session for full commission briefing?
Let me double-check that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a great report. So I would encourage us to, yeah, to get a briefing on that. That's a good idea. Yeah, the GPI, Greater Portland Inc. board meetings this week. So they have been occurring every other month. I think they're going to go to monthly starting this fall. So I will certainly report on that next week. Probably the, and then I got an update on the preschool for all yesterday. That was a very good update. I hadn't gotten a report on that before, so we had good conversation about that. I look forward to more of those.
And you do know that's coming to us as a full board in September. Commissioner Treese and I have been giving just an update on how they're doing work, but they're going to be approaching an appreciable milestone in that September timeframe. So that's why we've asked for that then. But I'm really glad you got an update. That's terrific.
Yeah, and, you know, the comparison, of course, is Portland or Multnomah County. Is it Portland? Multnomah County, okay. Their program, and they've got a little bit of a head start on us on that. And so, no pun intended, since this is a head start program. Okay. But, yeah, they've got a, they've got a little lead on us there, and so we can certainly learn some things from there. So I look forward to having more communication about that. But probably the biggest meeting that I was in in the last week was last night, the Project Turnkey Econo Lodge. We had a public meeting with the Hispanic community businesses. Josh and Jess were there, of course, to present, and it was orchestrated by the Hillsborough Chamber. And it was broken down into three pieces. The first part was Washington County Housing Services, is where Josh and Emily and Jess all presented and then took questions. The meeting lasted nearly three hours, and part of the reason why was because we had interpreters for both ways. So we'd have questions in Spanish and then answers in English. And then sometimes we'd have questions, you know, they complete vice versa. So we, we had two interpreters, and they worked really hard to make sure everybody was hearing the correct information and the correct question. The second part was with our community partners, Greater Good, Northwest, Bienna Star, and Urban League of Portland. Those three folks were there. Took a lot of questions with that as well. And then a wrap-up of the Hillsborough Police Chief of Police, Jim Coleman. Overall, I thought it was, a lot of good information was shared, but obviously, it was focused on what exactly, how exactly is the Econo Lodge going to function? What, what are the rules? What are the regulations? And then probably one of my takeaways that I think we've got some more work to do is the Hispanic businesses were saying, we don't know what we can and cannot do within the law to prevent a homeless person from either harassing our customers or standing outside of our front door, smoking, or asking for money, or doing other things. And so they didn't know exactly what their rights were to, to deal with all of that. And I think it was good that we had the Hillsborough Police Chief on site. He answered a lot of those questions. We also had a representative from the DA's office because there was some concern that we were not going to prosecute anyone from that facility. That was false, and certainly that message was communicated. But we have, we still have lots of work to do. And so I'll try and put together some sort of, I guess, my thoughts and sit down with Tanya, and we'll have that conversation and then see what maybe next steps are going to be. Because this was certainly not a one-and-done public meeting. We've, we've got lots of work that we need to get done on that. So, yeah, long, long day yesterday, but very informational.
Great. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Good morning, everybody. I'm, it's been an active week, and there's going to be another active week coming up. Last week, I attended the Central Cultural Board Meeting, and it was a relatively short board meeting, but we did approve the budget. So that was, that was an important piece. The, the other event was the Homeless Advisory Committee Group, and that was a really interesting, that was my first meeting. It was very interesting. Emily Ruth put forward a discussion on verbiage. How do we talk about this issue? How do we individualize this issue? What does it mean to refer to houselessness versus homelessness? And she put together a great, kind of one-pager that I'll forward to all of you because I think it helps inform us about how to approach this. And there was a lot of comment on the, on the committee about the making sure we were being human in our approach and how we address these issues and how the, the titles that we put on things affect different people differently. So I learned a lot there. It's a, it's an interesting group to interact with, and I appreciated the work that they've done. This week, I've got a meeting scheduled for next Monday with a group of constituents that want to talk about sustainability issues. And we're meeting with the HBA to talk about their sustainability in relationship, or their development in relationship to sustainability. So that includes Fran Warren, Susan Mates, and Joanne Delmonico. Dave Nielsen is going to be with us, and Ryan McInster, the new government relations person, as well as a person from NOISE Development to talk about what's happening. So sure, I'll learn a lot, and I think the constituents will learn a lot as well. The other, the other piece that I just want to bring forward is, all of us got the Cost of Eviction Calculator memo from Annette Evans. I, I really want to take some time to understand what that means. It was done by PSU. Maybe you haven't seen it yet, Chair. So I, and I'll, I'll take a look to make sure it went to all of us. But it's, it's really an interesting tool. I want to understand what it means from a community perspective, but I also want to understand what it means from a, the landlord perspective. So I just want to bring that forward as something that I intend to learn more about. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention, Chair, you attended the last Policy Advisory Board Meeting for me, and I thank you for that. The, I think it was the final OK for the shower truck that is going to be available in Washington County. And in talking to Nafisa yesterday, it dawned on me that the concept of having these frequently asked questions, for example, that Tanya and Sia pulled together, is really valuable. And as we roll out a new service like this, I, I think it's, I think we need to make sure all of us have an FAQ on this type of service so that we have the opportunity to answer constituent questions ahead of time. So instead of being, being, being informed as to how taxpayer money is going toward the, to assisting this situation. So I just pulled, I just wanted to pull that forward. Thank you.
You're all bringing forward great information and highlighting things that we might be able to do as an agency, both to serve, to serve various constituencies that make up our community. What you were just highlighting, Commissioner Treese, is, is quite useful. And I think we've got to figure out, how do we continue to work with our community partners? Because while the shower truck funding is provided through a program that the county oversees, right, along with other local government partners, that service is provided through community partners. So quite a relationship. And as we move forward with the Supportive Housing Services Program, that, that partnership escalates, and how does it all tie together? So, yeah, I mean, as an agency, our, our game is really upped in terms of meeting community need and partnering in, in response to addressing that need. So I really appreciate all the information you're all bringing forward. Great job. I just hope we can keep up with all of it, right? Meeting the demand. So. Commissioner Rogers? Is there anything you'd like to share with us today?
I would say the highlight of my week was meeting with Tom Carr and getting to know Tom a little bit. So that was, that was nice. But met with Clean Water Services Institute, the insurance portion, for about a little over half a day. Mark was there as well, talking about insurance and kinds of products that we have and how we continue to offer them. I've got the preschool briefing next week, Jerry. I'm particularly interested in the finances and what this all means. So that, that will be interesting. Number of constituent meetings, but nothing that you need to know about. So I'll just leave with that.
You mentioned CWI and insurance in the same system. So I know Quik handles insurance. Does, how does CWI and insurance?
If I said that, I misspoke. It was, it was Quik.
Oh.
Only Quik, yeah. Not, not, not the, yeah.
Well, you handle both of those.
I do.
You know, and Quik with regard to our responsibility as the Board of CWS. And then CWI is related but separate from us. And I appreciate that you're investing time and energy in both of those. So thank you. Commissioner Treese, did you raise your hand? No? Okay, okay. All righty, well, thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I'll go next. Really, last week for me, since we met on Tuesday, was trying to catch up on all the different things that transpired that very busy last week of June, right? Just before the Fourth of July holiday with that, in response to that extreme heat wave that we were in, fireworks, bands. And then another week of, or two weeks around, you know, the, the first couple of weeks of July are very busy, or well, excuse me. A lot of people are on vacation, but life continues and things have come up. So a lot of that going on. But I also had the pleasure to really get back to having a regular constituent meeting, time slots on my calendar that had gotten somewhat put to the side during the budget season of May and June. So I was grateful for that. There was one that I know Commissioner Willie was somewhat interested in, in meeting. There were a couple of folks who wanted to meet with me subsequent to our town hall of Monday, June 28th. I always have to look at the calendar to remind myself of that date. One was related to homelessness, and Sally Reed of the Aloha Business Association. And Commissioners Phi District is looking for, well, she is planning a community forum. And, you know, she's in the early stages of putting that together to help advance the community's human and humane approach to homelessness. So that reminds me, Commissioner Phi, that from that meeting late Thursday, before I left for a four-day weekend to travel back east, I met with her, and I need to pick back up with you on, on all of that. And then another meeting that, oh, it didn't come out of our town hall. It came out of the Senator Merkley Town Hall, which was the next night. A couple of folks who are big horse people in, you know, the equine world, concerned about emergency response there, the horse network, so to speak, as well as how do we, they had questions about making sure that the facilities of the, the fairgrounds, the West Side Commons, continue to advance. And so subsequent to the email exchange that came up post-the Senator Merkley event, I let them know about the Strategic Facilities Plan that we have going on here at the county and the relationship with the West Side Commons Master Plan. So that was very helpful. But Ms. Angie, I did pass on then your name as well as that of John Wheeler because they, it would be useful for them to provide some contacts with, with Washington County Emergency Management. So. And I'm looking forward, through this meeting, I have three things. I'm looking forward to the possibility of either Ms. Angie addressing or to raise them the homelessness topic we just talked about, Project Turnkey Hillsborough, and, and then what may be an update on any wildfires with regard to Washington County. So lastly, this week, I have my monthly chair mayor's meeting coming up. It'll be a face-to-face one for the first time in a year and a half, which will be just wonderful to see faces. Though I have to say, from reading national news this morning over breakfast, I came prepared today with two different masks in case of the, the presence of the Delta virus. But through the tri-county chair meeting last night, we talked about COVID and community response and all of our staffs. You know, you're well-versed in our staff working hard to make sure that vaccinations are available community-wide. But we talked a little bit about the presence of the Delta virus. The national news, I mean, other parts of the country are just having terrible surges. According to, I followed the OHA daily email, and according to that email of yesterday, the presence of, there is some presence of the Delta variant here. Excuse me, I didn't mean to call it the Delta virus. I know words are important with regard to COVID-19. The numbers are not as great as in other places. So, so on one hand, I read the national press, and I get prepared to have a mask in case we need to reinstitute mask mandates. On the other hand, I'm absolutely thrilled to not have to wear a mask here in the building. So I know mixed message there, but I hope everyone's having a good summer. Commissioner Treese, go ahead.
No, I, I appreciate you bringing up the Delta variant and, and what the potential is for that. And I just want to bring forward the fact that this is, it's really an issue around unvaccinated people. And the, for, for me personally, it also is a reflection of the, our unvaccinated children. And the, I've started wearing a mask again in grocery stores and places like that because I don't want to. But I think it does really work toward protecting and setting the stage for protecting our children and those who don't, it's not that they choose not to be vaccinated, but for some reason can't be vaccinated. And the, the transmission piece of this Delta variant is just incredible. So I would encourage everybody to consider that possibility as well.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, good advice. Thank you. So I'm not super organized today, so I think I mentioned everything, but pardon me if I forgot something. Yes, Commissioner Willie?
Well, and I did forget something, the fair starts.
Yes, excited, this weekend starts.
Right. So anyway, just wanted to let everyone know there are some specific things that we'd love to attend and I will communicate that to you via email. And certainly if you, it's free, so there's parking available and some things like that. So we can certainly get you that information if you're interested. But yes, 10 days affair coming up, starting Friday.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that, too. I'm so looking forward to this weekend, seeing horses, you know, the big animals. And then next week continues with horses, but also the wonderful world of smaller animals. So I'm really excited to see that. Chickens, bunnies, goats, you know, you name it. So it's going to be a great experience and a wonderful carnival. And I'm impressed with the entertainment. Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair. That reminds me, thank you, Commissioner Willie. I remember, I forgot something as well. I'm doing an event tomorrow, civic engagement from an elected perspective. And I would love everyone to join me and everyone who's listening in the district or throughout Washington County or anywhere, please join us and reach out to District One email and we'll send you the link to register.
Good job. All righty, well, without further ado, we'll switch it over from board communication to leadership communication and start with our county administrator, Ms. Tanya Angie.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. So I do want to provide a Hague Lake water quality update. Just this morning, our Facility and Park Services learned that cyanotoxins, and I am pronouncing that right, I asked twice. Thank you, Mark, for agreeing with that. Associated with the cyanobacteria, which is the harmful algae blooms, were not detected in the water samples. Once again, they were not detected in the water samples taken on July 15th. Samples were taken from five different locations in the lake and this information will be released to the public very shortly. So I really appreciate the cross-departmental team also working with the triathlon organizers this weekend to ensure that safety of lake users is in place as we move forward with ensuring that we receive the test results. I do want to announce a new staff member has joined the team, Brenda Bartlett. She is our newest staff assistant, who will be supporting Commissioner Phi and then Commissioner Rogers and myself. A bit about Brenda, she joins us after most recently serving as a legislative assistant to a councilman in the city of Ottawa, Canada. Her portfolio included business relations and building codes in one of the fastest-growing districts in the nation's capital. She worked on constituent services, organized town halls and community meetings. She developed policy alternatives and drafted speeches. Brenda's already hitting the ground running and I know her and Nofisa will be connecting and starting to work very closely together.
So you're going to have to train me. Now we have two Brenda's here. Do I refer to Brenda B. and Brenda S. or?
The staff team, the Brenda's are working on how, what.
I am trainable. Be, put a human point on it.
We've already caught into that confusion. And we'll send that clarity to the whole board, so you're aware as well. Okay, I do want to touch base on a couple of items that the board had brought, brought up. Regarding community corrections funding, Erin Calvert is working on getting one-on-ones scheduled with you to talk about the biennium plan. In addition, I want to mention that there was previous, a previous request to dive a little deeper as, from the board perspective, in community corrections funding. And so that is being scheduled for late August or beginning of September. Commissioner Treese, I appreciate your comments on normalizing mask-wearing. That is something that our communications team is focused on, both with community messaging as well as messaging for our employees. We do need to, through these times, continue to support each other and support individuals making their personal choice on to mask or not mask. It is also important to remember that our Health and Human Services team continues to amplify messages around vaccination, access to vaccines, as that is incredibly important to continue to support community access. Chair Harrington?
So I really appreciate the message of mask-wearing is a sign of caring for one another. Yesterday, as I got off of one airplane on my two-leg trip home yesterday, the pilot had on a mask that says, said on the front, "This is not what freedom looks like." And I didn't appreciate that comment because we were all wearing masks. And my thought right away was, I'm wearing a mask to care because I care about all of us. And boy, I wish my white N95 had that right on the front. I would have gotten right in his face. So I know I'm being snide in raising this. But I just want to highlight that message that it's all about caring for one another because we do not live on islands. We are here together as a community, whether we like it or not.
I appreciate the conversation and updates on encampments as well as shelters. Just as, as a matter of brief background, the encampment program, which is a 12-month limited-duration pilot program, was presented to the board just on June 15th. Since that time, our cross-departmental staff team has been working in partnership with our cities to discuss this further. Our communications team is working on a communication strategy to provide information to the community. We understand that there are multiple perspectives on this issue and it is important to continue those conversations. And so more to come on this with our cities, though. It is important to note the cities will be carrying the communication message. And so our message will be focused on unincorporated Washington County. However, the goal is to have partnership and so that there's consistent messaging. This does take time and I do appreciate the feedback on the frequently asked questions. I know those are helpful tools for a community, for the board, and also for staff, too, especially on these cross-departmental efforts. If there are frequently asked question tools that would be helpful to the board, please funnel those requests through me. What happens many times is staff end up getting pulled off of other work, too. And with the multiple work items, initiatives and community need on our, on our plates, we need to balance the workload of our staff and work through our various priorities. And I would say there is a, there's a theme between feedback and concern we hear on encampments as well as shelters. And so how we can share in those communication tools and messaging is something that we're going to be looking at. Cia Lindstrom is going to be convening a cross-departmental team to really look at where we've been with Project Turnkey, what we've heard, what we've learned through that process, as well as Aloha Inn. As the board is aware, we, sheltering is, is part of the supportive housing services portfolio. And so one of the key questions that's been asked is, what will be the decision-making criteria or guiding principles used in shelter locations? So more to come on this. We are listening to our community, taking that feedback and putting that feedback to work as we do support our healthless and homeless community members. Chair?
I would just like to share, I know I have shared this feedback with you, but I've neglected to share it with my colleagues, so I'll do so now. I, we, we hear a range of viewpoints from our community members, our residents, as well as various business owners and operators, a range, a diverse set of viewpoints. We also hear from various state legislators. So we're sort of caught in this sandwich relationship of different perspectives. You know, state legislators enabled communities through different, to utilize different tools to address a growing need. And so as I have heard from, I think, three different state legislator, no, more, more like, not quite half a dozen, in, just in the last week or so, as they've, they've taken a breath post-session, but, and now they're, they're getting back to it. You know, they have questions, too, about our moving forward swiftly with these tools that they've enabled us as local community governments to do. So we're all in this together. We're learning together and we'll navigate through together. So thank you.
And that concludes my weekly update.
Could you summarize for us? Commissioner Willie, I thought, did a great job of bringing us up to speed on the meeting of last night on Project Turnkey Hillsborough, as called for by the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic or leaders, or Latino business community set of that chamber. Are there some next steps from staff's perspective that we should be aware of? Or just that that will be coming up that you could remind us of?
So I will work with the staff team and provide the board with an email update on next steps after last night's meeting.
And no sooner did I make that request than I remembered you sent us that full set of information just last night, or late yesterday. And I need to fully internalize that, too. Sorry about that.
Nope, that's okay. But the email that I will send will include some next steps as well as some, I'll call out key action steps that staff are taking based on input that we've received from the community at that site.
Great. And lastly, if I could ask you about wildfires in Washington County? Is that one out through the Gales Creek District in the Tillamook Forest? Is, is that still going? And how does that affect? I know, I think, was it Friday or Saturday? I just checked my work email very briefly while I was away last, this last long weekend, personal weekend. But I, I saw something that gave me a sense that the community of Forest Grove had a heightened awareness. They didn't have an evacuation, you know, get ready order, anything like that. So what should be, we be aware of? Do you know?
The last that I've been briefed is that we are in a monitoring stage. So there is not imminent action that's needed, but we are monitoring. And this will continue looking at the weather forecast. We are not anticipating rains, so these dry conditions will continue. I know John Wheeler is, of course, actively focused on this and will provide any updates when we hear more to the board.
Well, I'm sure my colleagues on the board, as well as staff throughout the agency, like me, have relatives who live elsewhere in the country. They see the news, the bootleg fire, as well as all the other fires out here in the West. I will say, at a personal level, there was an incredible weather front that moved through upstate New York. It rained all day on Saturday. It was so delightful for me that I took a video on my personal phone because it's been so long since we've experienced rain here. So wildfires, yep, it's going to be a long summer, long through the end of September. So thank you so much, Ms. Angie. How about you, Mr. Carr?
Morning, Chair. I have nothing to add to the discussion this morning. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
Not a bad thing from our legal department. You're doing great. And to you, Mark Jockers, for Clean Water Services. What's happening?
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and members of Clean Water Services Board. First of all, I want to report that I'm here because Diane is on vacation, which is great. Although she is going to make a little appearance at the 10 o'clock meeting as I have to speak, I'm speaking today with the U.S. Water Alliance on kind of the Northwest's response to the extreme heat and what that impacted water issues. From a COVID response, I want to, happy to report that we have no new cases in the last week. And then finally, I just wanted to thank Tanya and the county for their work on responding to hazardous algae bloom or the report of that. We are happy to hear that there is no toxins reported. Compliments certainly to the Health Department and the Parks Department and the Joint Water Commission and who worked with us as well on looking in how to respond to that to the public. So that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Oh, which reminds me, Ms. Angie, I know that our Public Health Director, Tricia Mortel, has either, her effective date for her retirement is either coming right up or it's already happened and I'm still trying to internalize that. Do we have an interim or a new Public Health Division manager yet?
That action item will be coming to the board, I believe, in your next board meeting. I don't have the rolling calendar, yep, on the agenda for next week. Marnie, thank you for sending me a quick email on that. So more to come.
Well, you know, that, the whole Health and Human Services team is so awesome. The dynamic duo of Marnie and Tricia and all of their team members have really just helped us navigate this global pandemic in such a stellar way that I want to make sure as we have a new member leading that team that we help that person feel welcome and that they know they have our full confidence, just as Tricia did. So thank you.
I know that Marnie and the team appreciates that support. And I know that Tricia would appreciate hearing that, too, as she does sail off into retirement to end your career. Supporting a community through a pandemic is something that Tricia needs significant applause and appreciation for. I know I personally appreciate her and really appreciate that she was willing to stick through the whole pandemic and then retire at this point.
Yes, thank you, Tricia. All righty, we'll move on next then to formal agenda item discussion. I know we have two updates. As of July 15th, on today's business agenda item, C16, from the consent agenda, was removed. And as of today, under the public hearing section, yes, item E, as in epsilon two, has been pulled as well. Are there any questions from the board member with regard to today's meeting? Nope. I want to thank Ms. Angie and the team for responding to my different questions as I read the packet. And that includes to the Clean Water Services team on that consent agenda item, taking care of the earthquake insurance. I, I want to compliment the team for not only that response, but also reading that consent agenda item was, you know, I know Clean Water Services is a stellar organization, continues to advance and lead the application of new technology for the betterment of water quality in the waste recovery, the water recovery business. But boy, I sure, that consent agenda item helped me internalize. But boy, I sure that Consent Agenda Item helped me internalize the the cost of doing that work, the equipment. And, you know, it's not every day that I read about equipment assets by themselves being 850 million and 250 million. And so I'm doing those numbers in my head and going, holy jamoly, that's a lot of billions. And wow, we have to have insurance for a lot of trillions, you know? Those things add up. So, boy, you know, my mind kind of went in a in a comic sort of way with, wow. So, you know, we, the team has done a really good job, I think, of helping us as constituents understand the process of waste treatment to, you know, water recovery. But what it takes, as our region has grown in terms of population, as the industrial compounds, for all the things that we take for granted in our everyday modern life, and how all of that science and technology and 24 by 7, 365, always on service take. So hats off to you. Alrighty, and so we proceed with our work session agenda. The next item, Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Update and Recommendations for Ongoing Collaboration. Sorry to the team for my lack of management of the agenda for a more timely start time. Take it away, Ms. Tillman.
Great, and thank you so much, Madam Chair and Board. For the record, my name is Latricia Tillman. And I am the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer for Washington County. And I'm really happy to lead this off. I believe when I started in this role, I shared with you that part of my why is the connection my grandparents had to Washington County. And they both moved here as children. My grandmother was an enrolled member of the Sistin Wapten Oyate Band of the Sioux Tribe. But she didn't learn of her Native heritage until she was 18 and living here in Oregon. She actually grew up during the time period of the national policy that forcibly assimilated Native children. And in her lifetime, she saw the termination of tribes in Oregon and their fight for restoration and self-determination. I had the honor of actually bringing her to her first powwow, which was the Nara Sobriety Powwow, which happens every year on New Year's Eve when she was 99. And so I'm really honored to bring this presentation to you. So following our celebration of Native American Heritage Month, we began receiving requests for guidance on when and how to use Native land acknowledgements. And we reached out to the partners who helped guide our Native American Heritage Month celebration. And I'd like to welcome some of those community partners in to our presentation today. So we have Dr. David Lewis, Daria Martinez. I think we're waiting still for Sandy B. Allman, but she'll join when she can. And then the staff person who led the process for us is Christina Barbosa. So next slide, please. Just some brief information again to remind you of why we're here. As I mentioned, this was something that was brought up in our celebration of Native American Heritage Month. And the community has also asked us to think about how we can acknowledge the history of Indigenous people that long predates the existence of Washington County by thousands of years. It is an emerging best practice in jurisdictions committed to equity. And then the board also asked us to explore this in partnership with staff and community so that we could make sure that we have a consistent organizational approach and not have various efforts coming through various departments and committees. So it's part of our One Washington County approach. We began with community partner so that we could center Indigenous leadership and continue to lean into our commitment to build relationships, to center community voice, and to exercise our commitment to partnership and healing. So I want to thank you for your time. And at this point, I'll hand it off to Christina to lead us through the presentation.
Morning, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. If I can get the next slide, please. So as previously mentioned by Latricia, I was tasked with convening our Native American Indigenous leaders in our community to draft a land acknowledgement. We start off with goal setting about what really the task that lied ahead of us was. And we co-created a goal to build real authentic relationships with Indigenous people and carry our actions beyond the words of the acknowledgement to support Indigenous communities. What became very clear in our discussions as a work group in regards to a land acknowledgement was that the land acknowledgement was the beginning of an ongoing partnership that was needed within our communities. Next slide. This is just a brief historical context for everybody. We began our land acknowledgement work group, our first meeting began in or happened in April. We comprised a group of 13 members representing nine tribes. And out of those nine tri, nine member or 13 members, sorry, two of those staff were county staff participating in this work group. As our work conveniently moved forward into drafting our first land acknowledgement that was co-created by the group in June. Our draft acknowledge, our initial draft acknowledgement has been completed. And during this month, we will be sharing the draft land acknowledgement with elders and Indigenous community leaders for feedback and approval of such draft. The draft will then be shared shortly after my portion of this presentation by one of our committee members. Also, moving into August and September, moving forward as a group, we would like to train staff on how and when to use the adopted land acknowledgement and the appropriateness of how and who presents a land acknowledgement, whether it's in meetings or opening of ceremonies or gatherings. This will lead into October and November of 2021, where we will hopefully adopt a land acknowledgement as a part of the Native American Heritage Month celebration moving forward. Next slide. And I would like to hand it over to Dr. Lewis, who would do a brief introduction of himself.
Thanks, Christina. I wanted to congratulate your your staff for a great job in organizing this effort. They were very helpful, very listened to everything we had to say. And I think that, you know, the success of the project, it really has to do with your staff and their openness. Also, thank you, commissioners, for list, for having us today, listening to what we have to say and perhaps thinking about it and asking some questions later on. I wanted, we wanted to offer this land, you know, it's draft form because, you know, it's clear that we have a work product that to share. And so we thought you'd be anxious to see it early on. And so we wanted to let you in on, you know, the down low in terms of the draft, so that you can begin thinking about it. I'll just read it for you. "We want to acknowledge the people of this land. We live the Adfaladi Kalapuyans, also known as the Twelton Band of Kalapuyans, the first inhabitants of Washington County. We are grateful for the land we are on, Kalapuya land. Signs of the Land Valley Treaty in H55 were removed from their homelands to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation. Today, their descendants are tribal members of Grand Ron and Sluts Tribes, carrying on traditions and cultures of their ancestors. We acknowledge and express gratitude for the ancestors of this place and recognize that we are here because of sacrifices forced upon them. In remembering these, these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their continuation in our community. I'd like to invite all of us to reflect on the role government has played in the painful colonial history and reflect as well on the resilience and healing of the Indigenous land communities. We would like to invite everyone to collaborate, work together with the tribes, take care of the land and water and the people who have at these spaces." And that's essentially what we have. I think we go next slide now. So as we were having several discussions about the production of this land acknowledgement, we also had many discussions about, you know, what else, you know? Because a lot of times I shared my experiences of being in meetings at the University of the places where people are sharing land acknowledgements, but it doesn't really go anywhere. We thought that there should be a deeper commitment and maybe the county maybe has some perhaps responsibility to inspire more education, more learning, more understanding about this deep relationship that the county has with the tribes around us. And so we we offer these other sort of thoughts, perhaps recommendations to the council so that so that maybe we can take this project further. We thought that when using the land, we should verbally share at the beginning of all public meetings our posts in written form for gatherings. I mean, this is really a suggestion that, you know, posted in various forms, mainly because some people necessarily don't read. And sometimes people miss the beginnings of a meeting. And so maybe they they need to see that always posted at the gathering rather than just here at the very beginning and it doesn't appear ever again. So sometimes meetings can go very long. And so we thought it would be better if it was always there, perhaps posed somewhere on a sign, on a placard, whatever. We also thought that it would be good to post signage in county buildings in prominent facing locations and maybe consider other prominent languages in the county. Maybe not this complete acknowledgement, maybe a version of that. We've thought about a maybe a a less dense version of that or a more dense version, depending on what you want. And we can sort of help with that, that production if you need it. But we thought that would be a great acknowledgement on the part of the county, a very sort of simple thing you could do on the part of the county to always have that acknowledgement around. We thought it'd be great to develop a county policy that ensures and outlines use because a lot of folks use their email, which is fine. But there are lots of smaller committees and, you know, perhaps work groups, people meeting, three people in an office. And some of those settings may be appropriate. And sometimes it may be cumbersome, inappropriate to use. We thought it would be best used in sort of public, more public gatherings rather than than simply three people meeting in an office, having a small meeting. And so that's really a policy decision on the part of the county that needs to perhaps happen. And maybe there should be some sort of direction about how it should, how and when it should be used. Recognized use of tribal land and email signatures, we thought it would be appropriate for that, but maybe a smaller version. Put this whole thing in a signature, maybe getting, begin using a little bit of paper. So we thought that maybe we could develop a smaller version or a more succinct version, that would be better for email. And that's perhaps something in the future, too. There could be actually even a link to perhaps a website, you know? This is a new thought I just had, but people could offer some sort of link to to more information other places that may take the, the, take away some of the cumbersomeness of having a giant signature. And then recognize Indigenous people in meetings and provide the honor of reading, sharing land knowledge when possible. I don't know how many meetings I've been, I've been in where people are acknowledging the Kalapuyan people, but don't acknowledge that there's actually Kalapuyan people in the room, which is a very odd experience, if you can imagine. And so it would be great if organizers of these sort of public meetings would maybe take the temperature of the room, try to figure out who in the meeting may be Native or, and then perhaps offer the honor of saying the land acknowledgement to these people. And if not, you know, really anybody would suffice, but at least go to that link, offer the honor to somebody in the room and off, and and really basically noticing that it's not that that you that this is not just acknowledgement, that we actually are Native people among you, too. So that would be good. And so that is the extent of this part of my presentation. Thank you again. And I turn it back. I think it's going to Daria now, I think.
I just want to say thank you for having us here, Board of Commissioners and Madam Chair. So my name is Daria Martin Biggum. I work for the Hillsborough School District. I am Yavapai Apache from Arizona, tribal enrolled member, as well as a Talawa from Northern California. And so if we can advance to the next slide. So as Dr. Lewis was just mentioning, you know, we, we created this land acknowledgement and helped draft. But again, we, I feel like there always needs to be action that goes in hand with this land recognition. And so again, action steps and recommendations would be transitioning this group that we have met with. So I have been very impressed with the group of community, Native community members that Christina reached out to. I feel like it has a great wide range from school, professor, administrators, as well as community members who do big things in Multnomah County, as well as other neighboring counties. And so I, I think we have a great advisor, we have the beginnings of a great advisory committee. And so this would be something that we could provide input to into the EDI strategies and community engagement work as a whole. And I think, again, just the different people that we are all connected to, I feel like we could really grow a very strong advisory committee. And so with this, though, we would want facilities to be addressed, so naming of buildings, rooms, parks, and rivers, considering just the names that they are currently named. And again, just the education that can go around that. One place that we all would desire and love to have is beyond Zoom right now. We would love to have a place, Plank House would be the preferred, but a dedicated gathering space where we could come together as Native people. I do not have the numbers, but I do know that in Washington County, the Native community numbers are rising. I know just for myself, as I go into my local Albertsons, I am greeted a lot of times by Native community members. And so my, you know, tagline is always, hey, what tribe are you? Because they're wearing something that would represent to me that they are from a tribe. And a lot of them are not from this area, is what I'm finding. Although there are a lot of local tribal members that live in the area, we are just kind of all scattered. And so it's, it would be wonderful to have a place where we could come together to meet, to, you know, just know that we aren't all so separated, but we could be a united front. And again, another great suggestion was exhibits throughout Washington County land locations. I know right now we have the mobile, this is Kalapuya Land exhibit through the museum, Five Oaks Museum. And that is a really fun way. Again, I just, again, being a parent, being an educator, it's really great to see those signs and to have that teaching moment with my kids, as well as like neighbors, friends, what have you. So more of those would be great, just to, again, create a visibility of our Native community, as well as organizing quarterly guest speakers. I know during Native American Heritage Month, Dr. David Lewis had the opportunity to come and speak to, I believe, the Washington County after our proclamation of Native American Heritage Month. And again, so thankful that Latisha reached out to my parent group to be able to help facilitate that reading of proclamation. And so that's, again, something I know on my end and in the district, we were really happy about to be able to see our students and staff being put in the spotlight. So with that, these guest speakers, I would also want to, you know, or I think our group would like to see partnerships with other Native communities, organizations that could help with staff to understand the Indigenous culture as well as history. And I know we all have our separate connections. And so I think that's not, there's, there's not a shortage. There's definitely like a lot of people who would love to come and have this opportunity to to share and speak on behalf of the greater Native American culture. So we can advance to the next slide. So the community additional recommendations were 1% of funding for Indigenous art in the community. And again, we, I know there's a lot of artists that we wanting to participate in this, as well as school districts that have students that would love the opportunity to create something in our communities that would, again, visually show them that they are here. Increasing culturally responsive resources and services for Indigenous communities. Currently, right now, for any of our Um, currently right now for any of our um. Indigenous ser- like services, we tend to have to go up to North Portland near. The airport, uh Nara and Mia are some of the closest, um. You know, culturally responsive and um that would serve our native communities, and so looking here, there's a way we could partner with those. Larger organizations as well as the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron to be able to. Provide something here locally in Washington County where families could access mental health or other. Um, youth services, I'm just, there's, I mean, we could, we could go on there, but I think that would be something that would be beneficial to. Our um families here on the West Side. Um, we have wanted to host a a powwow and partner with um. Our indigenous communities for either in October. And November, and that's something that we are um working on currently as we are trying to find a date, um. Wingspan was kind of our first um. Spot that we recognize would be a great place to host because of the easy um public transportation. I have been on the powwow committee here for the. Hillsborough School District in which we have um hosted a powwow in Hills, our Liberty High School. For pre-COVID the past six years. Um, we weren't able to do it the year before, um which is great, um and we're super thankful for all the people that helped and that. That one of the hardest things, though, is having public transportation that actually went up to the school, so we literally would have. Um, I know one year we had um. Members uh coming in from downtown Portland, all dressed up full regalia, wanting to be at that powwow, but. There was no bus line, so they literally walked from the Mac station to get there. Um, because again, this is something that brings our culture together, a time where we can come together, celebrate. Um, our resilience, and so I think this is very important um for us to really consider. You know, in some way, shape, or form, hosting a powwow or some kind of cultural celebration. During either the month of October, which would be Indigenous Peoples' um Day Celebration, or um in. November, which is Native American Heritage Month. So again, and then going beyond that, right, because we're more than just one month of celebrations, um we would love to host a year-round community learning sessions focused on. Focused on local indigenous history and current events. And it's an integral um proactive program for indigenous celebrations and gatherings, so again, um any time where we can. Tie the community um to know more and to dig deeper into the cultural history that is present here. In Washington County would be a great way, but just also to show that we are still here. And that um we are, you know, resilient and that we are thriving in our. Communities and in our schools, and I know um Beaverton and Hillsborough um have some great um student. Groups, and we would love to just be able to help in any way that we can. So I will pass it on. Again, thank you for your time and for your um just listening to our recommendations.
Great, thank you, Daria and um. Dr. Williams, we really appreciate you and the entire community or the entire committee. For your um wisdom and guidance and these recommendations that you've provided. Um, if we could go to the next slide, we do have um. A couple of policy questions for the board um to provide guidance and direction on, and the first question is. Uh, should the indigenous land acknowledgement be an expectation of all board and commission meetings? Um, in alignment with the recommendations from this committee? And then recognizing that there were numerous additional recommendations, which other recommendations would you like? Um, staff to start working to incorporate into Washington County practice? And so the next slide, I think we turn that over back over to the board for your discussion.
Yes, thank you for staying on the policy question slide. Commissioner Trish, you want to go first? That'd be great.
Uh, first of all, thank you very much for the work that's been done and for this presentation. I've learned a lot and I really appreciate it. I I believe that uh. I would like to hear from Ms. Angie about her experiences uh with with these issues. I know that they've been extensive. Both in Mankato and I also think in Boulder. Is that correct, Tanya? Uh, I I would just like to hear your advice and your thoughts as well.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Tris. Um, I think what is important is that we do. Listen to our indigenous community, um and that's what this process did. And so I really appreciate our community members coming together with these recommendations. Um, from experience, that is the feedback that um I had heard. Um, during the time I served in Mankato and as well in in Boulder, that we um as um. As uh white people do not take the action, but we really center. Our indigenous voices in the process and take their recommendations. Um, so. You know, I have nothing to add because I really um trust our community leaders and um. The I value um seeing actually what the landed acknowledgement language would look like. Relative to um the question, though, I think the key question for a policy discussion is the third. Um, line of the policy question. All board and commission meetings. It is important that we do ensure that we are consistent um in practice, and I believe that you heard that. In today's conversation, so I would ask the board also to um. Just think about that consistency, um because consistency relates to commitment. Thank you for the question.
Thank you very much, and I respect your uh your experience. That's that's why I was asking for your input. Um. I am supportive of this action, so I will leave it at that and let others speak.
Thank you. Who's next? And I'll note it's quarter till ten, so we need to move along. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie, thank you.
Uh, well, and I appreciate uh Pam, you being supportive of this action, but. That's that's a very, very broad statement. There's a number of things in this presentation. Uh, that they're talking about, so. Whereas I'm supportive of the certainly of the um. Land acknowledgement and um the drafting of that resolution and those things, doing some other things to emphasize this and to perpetuate it. Uh, don't have a problem with that, but there's a whole bunch of recommendations in here. Some of which, when we get to the page that uh page eight of the slide where it says additional recommendations. Those are things that um quite frankly, I don't think we as a. Board of Commissioners need to endorse and give the green light to this. These are. These are acknowledgements that I think uh other um communities uh of color already. Do kind of as as part of their um. Of recognition, I guess, and continually keeping these um. These kinds of things uh top of mind with us, so. Uh, there's some things in there that I don't think that we as commissioners need to. Uh, give. Approval to. Uh, there's other things of. Um, you know, naming of buildings and plank houses, and there's a number of things that we. Do need to um, I think, incorporate into maybe some of our thought process. Um. And certainly be kind of top of mind, but uh but again, I'm not sure. I'm I'm not sure how we go about doing all of this. The the important thing to me is. Uh, probably on slide six. Uh, where we're talking about verbally share at the beginning of all public meetings. Post signage on buildings, develop a county policy. That's the part that I think, yeah, I'd like to see us move ahead on. Uh, but it just for clarity for me. Um, I need I need some more information. They need to. Better understand what it is that we can do. And uh what exactly it is that we are authorizing before we. Authorize, so to me, there's, this was a, this was a great presentation because I wasn't aware of any of this before this, um. Uh, but I just feel like I am, I need. I need more information before I can move ahead on this.
So Commissioner Willie, I just would, I would just like to clarify that I'm supportive of the policy questions. That's what, that's. That's what I was talking about.
Okay.
A darn mute button. Dr. Lewis, it sounds like as a. Committee member, you have a response to some of the thoughts as well as. Ms. Tillman and Ms. Angie, if you could please let the recorder and team know. That we will not be starting the other meeting right at ten, that would be great.
Um, thank you for calling on me. Um, I I understand uh Commissioner Wiley's um. Um, uh, misunderstand, or not misunderstand, just not understanding yet, um maybe the depth of what we're asking for. Um, I kind of think of it, um, when we o- offer these recommendations for additional programming. Much like um the county sponsors the county fair. For people in the county, that's become a cultural tradition. Um, that at the fair you offer different kinds of cultures, you know, uh agriculture, culture, uh. You know, horse culture, um. People making pie culture, I mean, all these different things are happening at the fair. That um has has become part of the culture of the county, has been that way for more than a hundred years, probably. I mean, I don't know how long your fair has gone, but. It it's been a been a part of of this community for a long time, and. What we're asking for is is really. You know, as an anthropologist, I think of it as a cultural change a little bit, like think about native culture as being part of your culture as well. And offer that, offer some other additional programming, culture programming. Much like your fair, you offer once, at least once a year. Perhaps even as as part of the fair next year, think about offering additional native programming, indigenous programming um there. A- as well as probably perhaps other venues as well, perhaps the museum would be good. You know, maybe e- even in 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 the uh uh other offices, you know, the schools. So there's different venues for this that can't, that can happen, but. I think that, you know, the fair example is um. Shows uh that the county isn't in a culture production. Uh, they they do some of that, and so. What we're asking for is that you think about um and consider uh indigenous culture as well.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Ms. Tillman?
Um, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think maybe the recommendation going forward would be that we. If the board could direct us and the committee to provide a work plan and maybe a prioritization of. Um, particular actions within the um policy recommendations to bring forward for your approval. Um, and then we, uh, you know, can make ourselves available to each of the commissioners to answer any questions. Um, and then come back to you so that we have a sense of. What work you would like us to continue to take on and whether or not you'd like us to formalize this. Um, body um with a a charter and a scope and, you know, what work is in scope and out of scope.
Thank you for stepping in and uh saying that now. I think Commissioner Willie is asking reason, very reasonable questions, uh and I appreciate. Appreciate him sharing them here with us and uh your approach, Ms. Tillman. Uh, Commissioner Faien, Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers, thank you.
Thank you uh very much, and I appreciate your presentation until I'd read it the other day. I had. Not really understood the scope of the work either. Um, all groups of folks, uh whether they're uh new to our state, uh new to our nation, all deserve respect and dignity. That's what people want. They want respect and dignity and. Those who uh came from um. Past generations, uh. My family, at least on one side, been here about a hundred years, but that's a very short period of time. Comparison to some of the tribes, but still, we. Refer to ourselves as natives, be only because uh there weren't a lot of people around in those days. Uh, there are a few issues that I have. Uh, one, as I read, uh, these are just for discussion, reasonable people can come to different conclusions. Uh, as I I read the acknowledgement, I uh didn't like. The line that said, I'd like to invite all of us to reflect on the role. Government has played in the painful colonial history. Um, that's just me, uh my sensitivity. Uh, I know um my family came to this state not because. They wanted to colonize anything. They were poor, and they. Came because it was a reasonable place to come that they could get a start. Uh, so I I would much rather say the uh. Uh, on the role past governments have played and 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 so the wording would be more powerful to me, so I just. Make that suggestion that not all of us uh view things in in that way. Uh, another uh uh concern I have of of reading uh. Declarations at every meeting. Is that we have a number of folks that we honor for their contributions, not only to this state and this area, but to the country, and. So I I I like very much the idea of uh posting notices. Uh, that that makes a great deal of sense to me and shows the respect and dignity. Uh, but I don't know about on every meeting, that that I need to really ponder that, just as. We could be doing those things for a number of groups, so. I I'm concerned about that. In regard to the one percent. You may want to define one percent of what? If it's one percent of one point five billion dollar budget, that's a pretty big number. Uh, so I think what you you're saying is one percent of the amount that we contribute to the arts, but. You you just may want to make that that clarity statement. And then uh my uh personal bias, uh this is just me, um. When you asked the question of all boards and commissions. I really think that those, that we don't have to have any board. We could do all the work ourselves if we had the time, capacity. So these are folks that are appointed to do specific work. Um, though they subscribe and have to subscribe. To the policy set by the board, I I I'm really not fond of people doing things at at those board level. I think this is a commission level statement. I think that uh. That if we're going to do things, it ought to come from here. I'm not. I don't, I I'm not really fond of people uh deciding what they will and won't read at. Their board meetings, everything they do there is very specific work that's been assigned to them. So those, those are my issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Faien?
I thank you, Chair. I'll I'll keep it brief and say that. Uh, this is very obvious and that Washington County needed to do this years ago. Um, I'm in support of the acknowledgement, and I appreciate what Latricia said around. Coming back with a work plan with the other expectations and other recommendations to sort of engage. I think we've heard a great um uh presentation and recommendations, and I think we have our margin orders, and I think we have a. Great plan and a great path to move forward. Um, and look forward to the conversation around the work plan and how do we implement the other. Um, uh, recommendations. I think they're very realistic, and I think that they're very doable. Uh, I do agree there's more conversation that should happen so that we're. Methodical and and really strategic, um. And I appreciate what uh Commissioner Roger said, that one percent, I was thinking about the same, and. So um, I think uh looking forward to the other conversations and um and fully support.
Yeah, I think on the one percent being clear, is it the one percent for the arts provision and all capital projects or or what? Thank you, Commissioner Fai. So um, I want to start with my thanks to the committee. And for our presenters today for helping me do a better job in service to our community. You know, I've I've certainly come to appreciate as. The Agency of Metro, where I served as a Metro Counselor for twelve years, and now. At Washington County. As we are the Board of Commissioners, as well as as we are the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. That it's clear that we do as a governmental agency, past boards as well as. Us as current as will future boards, invest in the sense of community. Uh, and sense of community is just like all of us as we experience life. Life experiences are work that is never done, right, until we die. Uh, so this, too, is part of that work, and I appreciate how um. How Dr. Lewis put it, that culture-making, uh culture-production, those were her, his words. Uh, is part of what we do as a county. Uh, the thought that went through my head as I read this material in preparation for today's meeting, as well as. My internalizing it through this uh presentation of today is. For me, my overriding goal is making sure that. What we do and how we go about it is both genuine and meaningful. And is. Some uh and is an experience that we continue to advance over time. and is some and is an experience that we continue to advance over time. On the land acknowledgement, I appreciate that the committee has done this work as in the draft today. I'm a little uncomfortable as a board member. I realize, yes, we do have to adopt it. And I appreciate the comment that Commissioner Rogers made. But I think I'm most comfortable today in in our providing this input and asking Ms. Tillman and the group to consider that and come back to us with with what you think is a genuine and meaningful statement. You may, after your discussion, choose to recommend to us that we keep it just as you have. And I will respect your recommendation, no matter what you come back to us with. I will say, before I get to the array of policy questions, that I'm really, really excited about the possibility of starting a powwow here in Washington County. I think it's about time, but I also recognize that it is something that we need to make sure as one of many community partners that we continue to invest over time. So I would ask, or I'd like to suggest, Ms. Tillman and to the committee, can you help us figure out how to make that genuine and meaningful investment? So for example, yes, I agree that having a powwow sometime, I'd be excited if it was, if it happened between now and the end of the year or, you know, I don't want it to go a whole nother year that that occur along either light rail or frequent bus. So if it's not at the event center, if it's at Century High School, for example, I'd be fine with that too. But I want to make sure it is something that the board does, Washington County as an agency invest in. And in practicing the art of the possible, I I need Ms. Angie and Ms. Tillman to work together to help us understand that financial investment. On and I I realized that was on slide eight and a feedback that Ms. Martin Bingham provided. Daria, thank you. On slide seven, I'll need to have a briefing as well because I want to better understand the the recommendation with regard to gathering spaces, you know, dedicated gathering spaces and plank houses. With plank houses, I don't know if it is appropriate, for example, for me to consider that as a general community gathering place that also is a plank house for in having a plank house that is specifically for the the tribal community. And I certainly admire that OSU does have a plank house on their campus as I experienced through my attendance at the Association of Oregon Counties County College. We we as a we as a government have heard from we ourselves struggle to have places for community gatherings and there are many cultural groups that come to us with the request to have more dedicated gathering spaces. So I need to explore that a little bit more with Ms. Tillman as well. So if we could go back to the slide for the two policy questions, I do want us to move forward with adopting a land acknowledgement. But as you heard from me moments ago, I would appreciate another pass through the committee based upon our direction today. I, as one, am comfortable with the the draft as shared with us today, but I also hear Commissioner Rogers's statement as well. And so I would ask that you simply ponder that and come back to us. You made a lot of great recommendations and, boy, I would like to see how we invest in that promptly yet over a course of time, because I know we are challenged in many different ways. And I think that is the intention of many of Commissioner Willie's questions, or at least that's the way I I heard his question, seeking more information. I want to make sure that as we move forward with reading the land acknowledgement, one place that I'm going to need a little help is as I serve to host, you know, as the as the chair, kick off a lot of public meetings. It's one thing for me to read the statement, but I really appreciated, particularly, I think, Dr. Lewis mentioning that it's very important not only to recognize who's in the room, but invite them to participate, including in the reading of the land acknowledgement. And what I I don't assume that I do this part well. I want to make sure that as I do so, that I do so in a way that is not only respectful, but that I deliver it in a warm way as well. And so I don't assume I'm I do a good job there yet. So I think that's another personal learning that that I will need to just touch bases in a one-on-one with at least Ms. Tillman. I did appreciate the statement, Dr. Lewis, that you shared around, you know, acknowledging native people amongst you. I've I've learned a lot here today and I want to make sure that as our committee members have invested their time, not only in service through this work, but also in spending time with us today, that you walk away from this meeting hearing that from me. I am really grateful for this and I want to make sure that as we continue forward in all of our public meetings in service to the community, that we verbally share this in that it does show commitment as well as the written postings that you talked about. I am not at all uncomfortable with the boards and commissions also reading this land acknowledgement. I think it would display a commitment to our community, but I do want to make sure that it isn't just, you know, like agenda review. It's something that's a good business practice and you check it off. That element of genuine and real. I'm I want to make sure, as Commissioner Rogers highlighted, that some of these committees in there, a lot of volunteers, along with professional staff participating, that we we don't just end up with a practice of people reading and it comes off as disingenuous, right? That's what I want to make sure we avoid. So I'm still exploring that that space. So I think those are my most precise comments for today's meeting. Ms. Tillman, what do you recommend moving forward now that you've heard at least five different opinions here? As well as our our sixth collective one?
Yes, well, I recommend that we take the board guidance back to the advisory committee and have them come back and they can determine maybe an interim time to come back to the board, both formally, but also I'll work with your staff assistants to set up some individual conversations with each of the board members, if you would like, to answer any questions that you have in advance of that next board presentation, to be able to get those questions answered in advance of adopting the land acknowledgement and then other related policy. So thank you so much for your feedback. Again, thank you so much to Dr. David Lewis. I apologize for misnaming you before and Ms. Daria, Martin Biggum and Christina Barbosa and Sandy B. Allman, who was not able to join us today. But we appreciate all of them and the entire committee who helped to work on this. And so we'll we'll be talking with you about it more soon.
Thank you so much and thank you again for all the work that you've done. I know we all respect it and appreciate it.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so we'll take a pause now in our work session meeting and switch over to another Zoom link for our Board of Commissioners business meeting. Ms. Angie, do is there anything we need to be aware of before we do that?
No, there's not. I'll see you on the next Zoom link. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you soon, Commissioners.